Okay, well, it looks like we all have all of the council members checked in and staff online. Is that correct, Lauren?
Yes, it does appear so.
Okay, then I will go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order on Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, the joint meeting of the Catati City Council and Successor Agency to the former Catati Community Redevelopment Agency at 7:00 PM. If we could please call a roll call check, please. Councilmember Delasso.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey. Oops, here, sorry, I was muted. Councilmember Lammon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Present.
Mayor Skilman. Here, thank you. Okay, and then everybody appearing remotely, if you could join me, please, in the Pledge of Lichens. I'll wait a moment for the flag to be on the screen. Oh, I got ahead of the clerk, that's my fault. So let's go ahead with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to approval of minutes from our regular meeting on April 28th, 2020. Move for motion.
A second, this is Councilmember Delasso.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Harvey, a second by Councilmember Delasso, if we can take a little call vote. Councilmember Delasso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to announcements. We begin with meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members leave or incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. Please see details on the web at catatricity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Catati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. It is our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service when we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer's order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. Like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@catatricity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels, available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. Okay, so we'll move on to item number six, which is presentations. We have an update, emergency operations, and this is a non-action item. I believe I'm turning over to City Manager Ovid, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. So I'll start at the county level and then we'll talk a little bit about what's been going on here. Last week, I think, as you all know, the health officer issued a new order, or revised order, opening up all types of retail for curbside pickup and delivery. There was a good story that I saw in KRCB for Golden Arrow, they started the, or an example of the type of retail that was allowed to start as of Friday of last week, and so progressively, different types of businesses are able to open up. And as of right now, all types of retail with delivery or curbside pickup are allowed. And also today, at the end of the day, the health officer issued an update to the parks order in Sonoma County, and sort of the high, at a high level, what the update allowed is it allowed the opening up of parking lots at parks. And as you may recall, the prior health order didn't permit parking at parks. This is more of a regional park issue, honestly, and I think the intent there was that they wanted to keep the parks for locals only and not people coming in from far distances. You know, mixing groups of people that don't normally mix together, so they had their last, as of the last order, had closed parking lots, although now, as of the order today, the parking lots are now opening back up. It does also allow the use of some sports amenities, such as tennis courts. Things that are considered high-touch remain closed, so those are things like playgrounds, picnic tables, barbecues, restroom, well, not restrooms, but I think playgrounds, picnic tables, barbecues are specifically mentioned in this new order, is not allowed to be opened yet. And like all the prior orders, and it continues now, facial covering is still in effect. Users come within six feet of each other, these are people that aren't living in the same household. If you have closer interactions with people you don't live with, you should always keep a face covering with you so that you can put it on. And then this order remains in effect until further notice, and so how I think that's going to affect Catati is that our tennis courts will be open, just the one, we only have one tennis court at Sunflower Park, and the parking lots, of course, would be open. Right now, we're considering keeping, or we're thinking about keeping the basketball court closed, just because that's a, you know, a close-contact-type sport, and also keeping restrooms closed for now, although I think the order does give some flexibility for restrooms. But right now, we're looking to keep them closed because there could be potentially just too much activity through a restroom until, until we get a little farther into the order. And then we're going to be posting updated signage with the changes with the new park order. So locally, here in Catati, we continue to operate our EOC, there's daily meetings, daily EOC meetings. As I, as you may have heard, the county is starting to wind down their EOC, and they're starting to reorient and look at, you know, the summer and fall. So the county EOC is starting to, starting to look at preparing for other type of events like the PSPS, fires, you know, those sort of things that we've had the last couple of years. And the health, the COVID response is being managed out of what they call a DOC, which is Departmental Operations Center, and that's being operated out of the Health Services Department. So they're continuing to be the lead on the response to the COVID, the COVID crisis. I will also say, sort of at county-wide level, there's also, the county has their drive-through testing facility, and also the state has opened up two testing facilities in the county that are testing people, and that's one of the, that's one of the keys to opening things up, is having the ability to have that kind of surveillance in the community so they know how extensive the cases are. And once they get a handle on that, and they should fairly quickly, because I think they're expecting with additional lanes at the state sites, to be up around 900 or 1,000 tests, at least capacity per day, and that is more than their 800 test-per-day capacity they're shooting for, so hopefully by this week we'll be there in terms of testing capacity, which will mean that there will be a spike in cases initially, because these are probably cases that have always existed out there, or a level of cases that have always existed out there, but they just didn't have the ability to test for them. Now, it looks like they're approaching that, so there might be an initial spike in cases, and then it should hopefully start tapering off. And, and this, of course, is, is part of the governor's criteria for reopening, there's a list of criteria that the governor put out that all the counties are supposed to attest to, meeting so they can move into what the governor's called Phase Two, which is opening more, more sectors of the economy. Even, even open these sectors of the economy, will still probably be operating in a modified way. Case coverings and social distancing separation type of criteria will probably continue to exist, as well as sanitation type criteria, but allowing some businesses to get up and running, and get, you know, get them going again. So the county does meet all the criteria that the state has laid out, there's a couple criteria that they don't currently meet, and that was some of this, there's two criteria specifically around the number of COVID cases being, what the state criteria is, that the COVID cases are stable or declining, and because the testing operation is really just finally ramping up now, they're not there yet, but, but hopefully soon, they'll have their arms around, you know, the actual number of cases in the county, and we'll be working towards that criteria. The other criteria is fatalities due to COVID, and there was recently another fatality, so they don't meet that criteria either to do further opening, but I would expect over the next several weeks, as things solidify and become clearer in terms of the COVID situation in Sonoma County due to the testing and so forth, that, that will continue on this path of, hopefully continue on this path of reopening. But it'll be progressive and it'll be phased, as we've already seen for the health orders that have come out so far. And so now getting back to the city, locally here, police and public works, of course, continue to provide services and make in the infrastructure, you see them around. So they're continuing to, it'll be hard at work. City Hall is also, you know, continuing to be hard at work, it is closed to walk-in traffic due to the health order, but we continue to work as we have been through the entire crisis on questions, citizens' requests, processing permits, development applications, basically the full suite of services to keep things moving. The only restriction, of course, is, or has been, on building permits, because we haven't been able to issue all types of building permits, because they're something that's restricted by the health order. Specifically, at this point, the ones that are restricted by the health order are ones that involve interior work in a occupied structure, so if you have like a residential structure or a commercial structure, so if you think of the residential example first, you have like a family living in the house, and they want to remodel their kitchen, for example, that kind of permit can't be issued yet, because the health officer is still trying to minimize contractor interaction with just the general public, you're mixing two groups of people that don't normally hang out together, and then same with commercials, so if you have an operating business and you have staff in there and customers, you can't be, you can't be doing construction. So that's, in terms of construction, that's the primary limitation right now. But aside from that, and I will say, even for those kind of permits, we are still able to review them and kind of get them ready to issue, but we just can't issue those yet until things change. We've also, we've also, you know, we're on a long-term, I think, as you know, kind of a long-term strategy to get to a lot more online telephonic type services so that we can better meet our customers, you know, where they are in a way, in time, that's more convenient for them. This whole thing has definitely accelerated that move because of just the fact that City Hall had to be closed for walk-in traffic. We've, throughout, kind of throughout the organization, we've moved a lot of things to, to online service, telephone service, so that we can still do all this, provide all the services we normally provide, but just provide them in a remote way, without the need for face-to-face interaction, to protect staff as well as just the public. And then we're also continuing to work closely with the Chamber of Commerce and actively get out public information about things that are relevant, especially things that are relevant for, for Catati and business information. And we also are starting discussions with the Chamber on, on what reopening looks like, and starting to think about, you know, how we could, how we could partner to assist. So that's sort of the, I guess, relatively quick overview of where things are that I'd be, would be happy to do and question.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to Council just to see if there are any questions, I know it's a non-action item, but just in case there are questions from Council, I see Councilmember Harvey has her hand up, Councilmember Harvey?
So Damian, has there been much more discussion around the antibody testing in the county? I know right now, the testing that they're doing is for actual COVID-19, so I was interested in when they thought they might start doing that, antibody testing.
Yeah, so the, you're right, so the county testing and, yeah, I'm sure you've read about in the paper, as well as the state testing sites, they are testing for active viral infections, so they're not testing antibodies, right? The county has also, I think it was this week, or maybe it was last week, they're setting up the equipment to do viral or immunity testing, they call it serology testing, and speaking with the health officer last week, we actually asked, I asked that question, and the intent of, the intent of it, according to the health officer, is not that the antibody testing would be sort of a generally available test, it was intended by the county health department to be used as more of a surveillance tool, so they would take a certain statistically significant portion of the, of the people being tested, and use that to estimate the total, sort of the total reach of COVID in the community. So it, according to her, it wasn't intended for people just to walk in and test themselves, at least the county's equipment was intended for, for doing that sort of surveillance testing to understand how widespread the COVID virus is in the community. And she did also warn us about a lot of non-FDA-approved serology tests that are out there that, according to her, are inaccurate, anyway, just advised us not, if we, if we got a great deal on one of those kind of tests, that she advised us it wouldn't be a good thing to do.
Right, right, yeah, I just was wondering about that, because we were sort of lacking in the ability to test for COVID-19, and there was a lot of people that kind of felt that they had it, but they were not able to be tested for it because they were so limited in the number of tests, so I wasn't sure whether they were going to make that a little bit more available for those that never were able to be tested for COVID-19. But it sounds like that's not going to be able to be done either.
Well, it's, so, so far, it sounds like, you know, I know there was discussion early on that maybe that might be part of the strategy about, you know, the abnormal people for immunity, that maybe they could go back to work differently than anyone else, but so far, I haven't seen that strategy from the health officer, as it's, it's more of a, it's more of a surveillance tool, is what she's intending, at least so far, to use it for.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Delasso also has his hand up, go ahead, Councilmember Delasso.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Damian, I don't know if they got down to this level of specificity, but I know, like the, some of the county trails, not in actual county parks, but like the trail that runs, I think, parallel to the Smart Line in sections, and also the rock path behind my house along the Laguna, had been open for foot traffic but closed to bicycle traffic. Do you know if that has changed, or were they that detailed?
My understanding was that not this park order, the one that came out today, but the prior one, allowed bicycles to go on Class One trails again.
It did, okay, so I wasn't paying attention to that then, very good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's been, I don't know, it's just only been a week, things are changing quickly.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Lammon also has his hand up, go ahead, Councilmember Lammon.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Yeah, Mr. Ovid, I wanted to ask, it's a perfect segue, when you mentioned the health officer warned the various cities to be careful of some of the antibody tests that are out there, because all of them, some of them have some problems with accuracy. I understand that's the case with some of the tests for active COVID as well, that some of them throughout the country do the high number of tests that were released in the early days to try and begin to get a handle on this thing. There's a high range of how reliable they are. Did the health officer speak at all to what tests we're using or what range of reliability? I, I just ask, because as data starts to come in, it would be helpful to know how really good a picture we have of what's going on in this county.
So the health officer didn't really talk about the reliability of the testing. My understanding is that it's a swab test, like a nasal swab type test, that's less than comfortable in terms of the type of test. I, I do know that the test kits were in very short supply up until basically a couple weeks ago. I, I just think as a, you know, as a country, as a state, we were just not prepared, and so, you know, it's taken us this long just to ramp up the testing. And I don't know, I don't, I don't know if the early testing was any less accurate.
It would be interesting to see, because I understand of the wide number of tests they out there, the industry's beginning to get a handle on what are the good ones, and which ones might have some bigger problems with accuracy. So just an update for the future, it'd be good to know what we're working with. Either way, you begin to get a picture of what you're dealing with, but obviously, the more accurate, the better picture you have, so that's really helpful. Thank you for that.
Yes, sure.
Okay, and then I just had one very minor follow-up question. I had noticed this when I was out and about, and also got a phone call about it. I'd noticed that the water stations next to the parks are still closed, like the water bottle refill stations, and I have a guess that that is because of sanitation issues, that you would need to have it wiped down after every use, but I just wanted to confirm that with you before I made any response to the citizens.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Even the current order that's out as of today still closes drinking water fountains. As a practical matter, you, because it has both a water filling, or water bottle filling station and a drinking water faucet on the same appliance, there's no practical way to, to stop, to like, open up one and not have the other, so.
Yeah.
And the order doesn't make a distinction anyway, the order just says drinking water fountains are closed for now, because they're considered high-touch, a lot of people will be touching, you know, touching them, and it's just not, we're not at that point yet, but that's allowed.
Okay, yeah, that made sense, I mean, I understood the question as far as, you know, now that parks are slowly reopening, it would be nice to have them, but at the same time, thank you for clarifying that it's clearly not included in the current order, so that's what I will pass along.
Yeah.
So, yes, fingers crossed. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands from Council, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Moore got his hand up just in time, yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Damian, I didn't know if the health officer had indicated if they were thinking about opening up any further testing sites, and specifically maybe one more central to the county, like near us?
Well, there's, I, like, Rona Park, Catati area, I haven't, I haven't heard, I know this, you know, when the state opened up one of their sites, one's in Petaluma, and the other one's in Santa Rosa, of course. There's a couple, I think there's a couple test sites in Santa Rosa, and the county, or the state side, I should say, was, this week was expanding their testing capacity, but the only other thing I guess I could add is I know that the state sites, and I don't know if this would happen, but I know initially when they were, when they were offered, when the state was offering the county these test sites to help the county test more, more people, they, they had initially said that they might move them around, you know, kind of once they've sort of, I guess, saturated an area with testing, they might move them, they would just, they would just need a physical location to be, so, you know, I'm sure it's a conversation that will continue to have with the health officer as this progresses.
Thank you, and then the only other question I had was, was there any conversation brought up about looking at separating the demographics between Santa Rosa and Rona Park, Catati, and maybe just have Rona Park, Catati versus Santa Rosa on infection rates?
That, it's come up in various contexts, but there hasn't been a lot of traction so far. I, I don't, I can't, I can't say exactly why they grouped those three cities together rather than have sort of a central Sonoma and Santa Rosa separately, but I'm making the list of all the questions, so that I can try to get some more resolution on that.
Thank you, that was all I had, thank you.
Okay, great, and since it's a non-action item, if there are any public comments, we can do that, and item 14. Okay, so we'll move on to item number seven, which is approval of the final agenda, so I'll check in with City Manager Ovid, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, no proposed changes.
Okay. Then with that, we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any members of the public wishing to speak to the Council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. With that, I will turn it over to our city clerk, Lauren Burgess, to check in with our virtual attendees.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman, I don't see any hands raised, but just so I can make the announcement to any new listeners, that if they would like to make a public comment, they can use the raise hands icon on your smart device or your desktop computer, or dial star nine if you're using just your telephone, and please listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number, and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much for checking. And with that, we will move on to consent calendar, item nine, which is list items A, B, and C.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Delloso. I have a request. I have an incredibly brief comment, and I'd like to ask you for your permission if you would allow me to either say it before we take any action on the consent calendar, or it's also applicable, I can say it after we take an action, but I was going to leave that to you.
Did you want to pull one of the items, or?
There's no need to pull it, no.
Okay. Sure, why don't you go ahead with your, your brief comment, and then we can look for a motion.
Great, okay, thank you. I just wanted to say it's related to item C, the request from the chamber. It's an annual request that we get, and I want to just thank Liz DeRoma Lear, I saw her name listed as chairman for this meeting. She's been there just about two years, and it's changed kind of the attitude of the chamber, I think, for the better. And I'm really hopeful that she'll stay longer. And there's some really good work that's being done by the chamber on behalf of the city for business improvements. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you. And with that, with that, John and I make a motion to approve items A, B, and C.
I would second that motion. This is Susan.
Okay, great. So we have a motion by Councilmember Delloso, seconded by Councilmember Harvey. All those in favor, please say aye, and I'll do a, sorry, roll call vote. Councilmember Delloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes, thank you. And with that, the consent calendar is passed. And we'll move on to item 10. If anybody on council has a direction on future agenda items, please raise your hand. And Councilmember Delloso, you are all over it. Go ahead.
I was really good in school at raising my hands, so I just want to kind of keep that effort going. Thank you. It is, this is, I believe, a topic that has come up recently. I know that a number of cities have looked to implement this, and I'm talking Bay Area wide, not just in Sonoma County. And so I'm kind of throwing this out there to see if we're interested in seeing something like this come back, and that is the possibility of some occasional closures of streets in Catati that could help, like the downtown restaurants. You know, when restaurants are allowed to open back up and serve, there's obviously going to be some tighter restrictions as far as spacing goes, where there's restaurants that could lose, you know, 70, 75% of their seating. And again, this is going to take some thought, and it may or may not work, but you know, if there's an opportunity to, say, if it's Friday nights and Saturday nights, close a couple of blocks, section of Old Redwood Highway, or wherever it's appropriate, where we have a cluster of restaurants, and just see, first of all, if the council would be interested in having a topic like that brought back to us, and then just get any feedback if staff has any at this point, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, go ahead, yes, go ahead, City Manager.
Yeah, so it's, it's funny that you bring this up because it was a topic of conversation at the chamber board meeting immediately before, before this meeting. And it's something that we had kind of tossed around, some different ideas. Of course, the kind of alfresco dining is one of the ideas. But, you know, we want to make sure that whatever we bring forward is, you know, is going to actually help business community. So when we talked with the chamber at the board meeting, the discussion was, the chamber was going to reach out to their members and kind of get their, between Noah and Liz, putting together a survey of members to get their input on what would be helpful to them. I mean, this, of course, being one of the ideas, which would be great for restaurants and probably for retailers, too. Other types of businesses may want, you know, may not want that because they want to preserve, you know, the ability to drive right up in front of their business. So we're getting a little bit more feedback from the business community, but that is absolutely something that, at least something that we're exploring at a staff level at this point with the chamber. And that was all I had.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I see Vice Mayor Moore. Go ahead, for your question, or your direction.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I was just going to say the same thing Damien had said. John, we had talked about that with the chamber and what we might do in that regard. And depending upon the information coming back and, and what the timing looks like, I was even open to suggesting we might even have a special meeting if need be on that particular topic.
Well, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, and that's, that's great feedback. I didn't realize there was a meeting just before this meeting. And I totally, totally get Noah and Liz putting together some kind of survey. I mean, there has to be a desire from the businesses to want to do this. And logistically, it's not like we haven't done street closures in the past, typically for festivals and whatnot. So, yeah, it just seems like there's a few cities around the Bay Area. I keep reading stories that they're doing it, they're thinking about it, and I have not seen any real feedback. But anyway, okay, thank you for that.
Okay, great, yeah. And I mean, we've also got our shop and stroll model, and also, I believe Santa Rosa does it, at least in the summertime, for their weekly farmers' markets. So there may be some information out there, but it's a great idea to get ahead of it, get input from the business owners who'd be directly affected. So glad to hear that we're reaching out to them first. Okay, and I don't see any other hands up for direction on future agenda items. So we'll move on to item number 11, appointment of the new library commissioner. And I believe turning it over to City Manager Obed again, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I'll just say that the, you know, as you know, we appoint a commissioner to the, to the library board as well, one of the members. And, and we put an application out and advertised the open commissioner position. And we had, we had Vince Doherty apply for that, and I believe the mayor had spoken with him and is nominating him for the position tonight for the council to consider. That's really all I have. It's straightforward. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, yes. And I did, I did speak with Mr. Doherty. He is actually attending as well, so was online to introduce himself. So, and he had previously applied for planning commission as well, so he's expressed an interest for a while now to be involved. And by way of introduction, before we can invite Vince to introduce himself as well, he is currently a teacher in Roseland and has led some several programs helping kids connect with local resources. And so if I could, through the clerk, if we could turn on his microphone and invite him to introduce himself, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Vince Doherty has been unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Skilman, members of the council. My name is Vince Doherty. I have lived in Catati, born and raised here. I attended Branch Catati High School, Sonoma State University, and I currently teach high school up in the Rosen School District. I live in Catati with my wife and our soon-to-be one-year-old Damien. And yeah, I saw the position for library commissioner come up after I had applied for the planning commission earlier this year, and I just kind of wanted to jump on the opportunity. I think the library is such an important community jewel, not only for educational resources, but as a, as a point of civic participation. And I just kind of lend my, my experience and my opinion and my perspective on, on the commission. And I think I could bring kind of a different voice, a voice of teachers, a voice of maybe like a bit of a younger demographic to, to the commission.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Vince, very much for attending tonight and introducing yourself. So I will go ahead and officially nominate you for the position of the Sonoma County Library Commission. And then I will bring it back to the council for either comments or a motion. So are there any questions or comments about the nomination? Okay, I've got hand up for Councilmember Harvey. Go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Well, I was very impressed with Vince's resume. I agree, we have had some challenging times of late with moving things technologically from a school perspective. So I think that your timing is really great because I think you will bring a good perspective on how to kind of move us forward. And yes, our libraries are very important, and getting us to kind of that next level, I think, is a great place for us to be. So I was very impressed with your application and hope that this moves forward and that we can approve this. But I was very impressed and really appreciate you applying.
Great, thank you. And I also have a hand up for Councilmember Delloso. Go ahead, Councilmember Delloso.
Thank you again, Mayor Skilman. Yeah, I just, I'm not going to repeat everything that Sue said. I totally agree with all of that. And I also just wanted to throw out there to Mr. Doherty that either virtually or in reality, when coffee shops and restaurants open back up, I'd be happy to talk about the library commission. I had experiences seven or eight years as a library commissioner. I had my hands knee-deep, I guess you can't have your hands knee-deep, but anyway, my knuckles were deep in the building of the new library over in Runner Park, and also a hand in the rewriting of the JPA, which is now probably about eight or 10 years ago. But with all that, there's a lot of background, and I'd love to fill you in. So I'm just throwing it out there. You can easily get ahold of my contact information through City Hall, and I can probably do the same for you. So anyway, looking forward to see where we're going to be moving this, this evening. Thank you again, Mayor.
Great, thank you. And then Vice Mayor Moore, I see your hand up as well. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Vince, I wanted to say thank you. I'm so glad that you decided to continue pursuing involvement in the community, and really look forward to seeing you down the road involved. I think it's great. The library commission, I think the advisory board couldn't have a better applicant coming on board. And I really would be supportive of, of the nomination, other than the fact that I think your son's name is Damien?
Yes, that was correct.
I'm very supportive of you. And thank you very much for, for coming on board in that regard.
I was waiting for somebody to comment on that. Okay. I also see a hand up for Councilmember Lammon. Go ahead, Councilmember Lammon.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Doherty for putting his application forward. It's a very solid application, and I'm really thankful for your willingness to serve, Vince. I think that's an important thing. I can tell you do, too. And, and I agree, bringing a new demographic in is always beneficial. So I intend to support this after public comment, and thank you again for your willingness to help your community. Appreciate it.
Okay, great. So now that we've all commented, I'll bring it up for public comment. Ms. Burgess, if you could just see if there are any hands up from the attendees?
Just one from Vince Doherty. Vince, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, perfect. Well, thank you all so much for, for the kind words. I really appreciate it. Yeah, excited about the opportunity. The last two weeks I've had to observe the library commission meetings during this time of crisis, for lack of a better term, and I've been experienced, quite an educational experience, and I'm excited to kind of throw my hat in the ring and kind of get, you know, get my feet wet and learn the process. And I'm just really excited for the opportunity. So I just want to thank you all again, and I would love to take you up on the offer. I believe it was Councilmember Delloso who would make the offer to me. I would definitely love to do that sometime in the near future when, when things kind of get back to a more normal situation. So thank you again.
Okay, great. And I'll just check in. Are there any other hands up to make comments? I have no other hand raised. Okay, perfect. So with that, I will close public comments and bring it back to the council for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to- Councilmember Lammon, I'd like to nominate, I'd like to rather move approval of the mayor's nomination.
I will second that. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Lammon and a second by Councilmember Harvey. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Delloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
And really, it's my own nomination, but yes, I will approve it as well. Thank you. So we've got unanimous for the appointment of Mr. Doherty to the library commission. So congratulations and thank you as well for your willingness to participate in that important public service. All right, and with that, we'll move on to item 12, the city manager's report. And I will turn it back over to City Manager Obed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the first is just a reminder for our water and sewer customers that many services we offer through, to our utility customers that are online, and including online payments, that can be found at, on our website, of course, and it's municipalonlinepayments.com/catati is the URL, if you like to just type it right into the search, right into the search bar. But on this website, you can view and pay your utility billing accounts online. You can sign up for papers billing, or you can set up your own automatic payments if you like to do that. During the COVID crisis, you can also just keep in mind that right now, we're not turning water off to any of our customers. And if they do have a need, we do have a payment deferral program as well as payment plans for, you know, prior city council adopted policy. So you can please call us at 665-3621, and we'd be happy to assist any of our customers if they have any questions, concerns, or, you know, need a payment plan assistance. Kind of tying into the whole online services, we also, through the same online payments portal, we also have the ability to apply and pay for dog licenses, as well as commercial and residential alarm permits. And this is just one small example, but we're continuing to add a variety of city services to the website. As I mentioned earlier, emergency operations update, the goal is to meet our customers where they are and keep business moving in a way that works best for them and when it works best for them. So pretty much every week, we're adding new things. So visit our website regularly. Also later this week, on Thursday, we have a budget study session. That's Thursday, May 14. And we're going to present the proposed budgets for the general fund, special revenue funds, and the capital projects funds. This is for the upcoming fiscal year 2021. And for anyone that was keeping a close eye on their email or the city website, that public, that packet did publish today, so look for that. In the world of public works construction, so Williams, the Williams Street and Olaf Street Sewer Replacement Project is, is out bid, and this project relieves an existing capacity constraint in that sewer, that sewer main. And once we get bids back and if it's awarded by council, construction will be scheduled to begin in July. Also, the West School Street Pathway Project is being advertised starting this Friday. So construction, if this is awarded by the council, would move forward and start in late July would move forward and start in late July or August, early August. And then finally, on the construction front, after a suspension of work under the prior shelter-in-place order, work restarted last week on the ranch, this is the Veronda Fletti Ranch House. Refurbishments is allowed by our currently-viced shelter-in-place order. Just the end of last week and this week, a new roof has been installed, as well as interior improvements to the main house. And the water tower is being framed up right now. So if you've driven by, you've seen that. Work should be completed on this in June. And then on some other just miscellaneous news and some recreation-related news, too. On Tuesday, May 26, we're partnering with Redwood Empire Food Bank to host our second drive-through food and donation drive at the community center right behind City Hall. This will be from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. You can drive to the parking lot at the community center to drop off donations of shelf-stable food, no glass, or perishables, of course. Or you can drop off, you can just make a donation, make a cash donation, without even getting out of your vehicle. So I also wanted to say thank you to everyone who donated in April. And it was, the community was very generous. We actually gathered more food donations and cash donations than many of the larger cities around us. So it was a very successful event. And we hope to continue to support Redwood Empire Food Bank as long as we're in the shelter-in-place order. And their food demands, their need for food is high. The Catati Chamber and Commerce has created the Catati To Go website. So this is a reminder, I know that you all know this, but this allows the community to see what service providers are open and when. This includes restaurants, boutiques, clothing stores, grocery providers, and more business types. So to see what Catati businesses are open, visit catatitogo.com. And this site is updated pretty much continuously, so check back often. We're also regularly updating our virtual recreation page on our city website that provides families with resources on ways to be active, creative, and learn while practicing social distancing. If you've checked it out, there are virtual tours and museums, online youth and adult exercise classes, craft instructions and ideas, and more. As we continue to navigate through the shelter-in-place orders, just be on the lookout for more adaptive recreation programming. And then for any other information about recreation, city programs, and events, please contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or a Wilson at catatacity.org. And you also, of course, like always, can get the latest information on our website at catatacity.org, or the city's Facebook or Instagram. With that, Mayor, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and I had a quick question. Can I, can you retell me the date for the food bank donations?
That is May 26.
So I did write you down correctly. Okay, perfect. So now I'll turn to council if there are any questions for City Manager. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So I will thank the City Manager for your report. And we'll move on to Item 13, City Council Members' Reports. So I'll look for hands for city council members who have anything to report out. I see Councilmember Landman, so go ahead, Councilmember Landman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just one thing to report. So yesterday, actually, we had our SETA, our CPA, meeting. And we heard our latest update to the draft plan for updating Measure M. This is our local roads thing that we've had for almost 20 years and that is going to be going out of time very soon. So we discussed this. This has been a long-term process of negotiation to meet the interests of numerous different stakeholders throughout the county. It is getting to completion. We're going to spend another week or so having just one more round of fine tuning, fine tuning some language. And then it will likely be finalized and go forward at the next SETA meeting, I would imagine. And then come to all city councils to listen to and give a thumbs up or thumbs down to before it potentially goes to the voter. But I should say that while I have strong confidence, after being part of working on this for two years, the measure itself is very good. It doubles money for local roads. It doubles money for transit and pedestrian. It gives us about three times the funding we have for bike paths in the past. And we do this at no extra cost, just continuing what we're currently doing with Measure M, because the savings that we're getting now from finally have completed Highway 101. So that's all great, but the little thing that's going on right now with the COVID-19 crisis, of course, changes the picture. And we understand that with the deep uncertainties out there in the public, the strong support we had in polling a few months ago for this might have changed. So we're going to take a run back of that in June. Just take the temperature and see if the public still sees the value in this and wants to keep it going. I would guess it has a chance to go forward and let the public make that decision. And if it does not, I would imagine it might not go forward. But so that's what's up with that. And you'll probably be hearing about it, I would imagine, in council in relatively near future. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that update. Not seeing any other hands or council updates. The only thing I was going to report is that, just as an experiment, I logged into the meeting tonight rather than using the link that was emailed to me. I used the information that was printed on the front of the city council agenda. So you just typed in the meeting ID and typed in the password, and it all worked as it was meant to. So just wanted to report that out. And then this Sunday, I'm going to be attending a virtual pasta feed. And all of the money that actually is going to be going to the caterer, as well as to the Redwood Empire Food Bank. So I thought that was great, that it was, rather than the usual fundraiser for a candidate, all of the money is going to the food bank. Okay, so then with that, I just see Vice Mayor Moore has his hand up. So go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore with your report.
Thank you very much. It was just a quick follow-up to a couple of issues. The REMEF potential consolidation with ParsAC, the other JPA, covering the same issues of municipal insurance rules. It's still moving forward. Then we have an upcoming meeting on that to get even greater definitive issues on that defined.